At six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. Nicole, could I have roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Everyone, please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everyone should had a chance to review the minutes of the regular board meeting on March tenth. If there's not any additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve them.
I move for approval of the March tenth minutes as printed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of March tenth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carried. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight, both in person and online. All right, we have public comment. No one signed up for public comments, so move on to the agenda. Everyone should have a copy of the agenda in front of them. If there's not any additions or corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carried. All right, move on to reports to be presented by the administration. Eight point one, school of the month, Wilson Elementary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is it on? Is it?
All right. Good evening. I'm honored. I'm honored to be here tonight to present on all of the wonderful things that have been happening at Wilson Elementary School. Okay, let's get, now this one does need to be turned on. There we go. Okay. So I'll start off by walking through our progress towards our three SSP goals. First up, ELA. So essentially, we're looking at a five percent increase of students who are proficient in ELA, according to our spring I-Ready diagnostic compared to last year. We are, we have been specifically focusing on comprehension and interactive writing with that. So jumping to some of our action steps that we have been doing to, towards reaching that goal. First, up in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the title of a text there, Shifting the Balance. We dug into a few chapters from this text. This was done during our staff meetings. This text focuses on how to bring the science of reading into the classroom and those best instructional strategies. Some of the key strategies include the important, the importance of listening comprehension, including building background knowledge and vocabulary, thoughtful questioning during interactive read-alouds, and building oral language. And when thinking about the vocabulary, we're also been putting an emphasis on using words that are two years or more above the student's independent reading level because, especially for that listening comprehension, that of course helps support their background knowledge as well. And then also to add, we've had a lot of discussions around how building that background knowledge and vocabulary naturally fits in really, really well with our science and social studies curriculum. So thinking about how we can do some cross-content instruction with that as well. Also, interactive writing. So we engaged in some collaborative professional development with Washington teachers. So I will get to more of that later, but that's something we've been doing to kind of lean into that upcoming transition is collaborating during our in-service time. So that PD was focused around interactive writing. This routine is very powerful because it supports the explicit instruction of encoding, which is the reciprocal process of decoding. Language comprehension through composing a text together. Again, it's an interactive process, so it's a writing piece that the students and the teachers develop together. And then also just focusing on fluent writing. So teachers from Wilson and Washington all took a survey early on in the fall to kind of rate where they felt like they currently were in the process of interactive writing and how they're implementing that in their classroom. So Mr. Wilson and I actually looked at our survey data together, and we decided to focus one of our in-service times together on just a refresh around the interactive writing process and the components that we should see when we are observing that routine. To go along with that, Mrs. Hankis is a literacy support teacher that serves Wilson Elementary students. She also serves some of the students at Prairie View Elementary School as well. She and I have been conducting quarterly walkthroughs in all of the classrooms. Of course, we just have the first, third, fourth, and fifth this year, but we've been doing quarterly walkthroughs and providing some specific feedback to teachers around how they are doing with that interactive writing routine in their classroom. So I think teachers have been very appreciative of that feedback. One thing to note is a part of the interactive writing routine, one component of that is really focusing on explicit phonics instruction as you are writing with students. Think traditionally, this has been more natural for like our K-two teachers, or not so much for our upper grades, our three-five teachers. But we know, and all the work we've done around the science of reading, that it's just as important in grades three, five. So we know better, and now we're doing better. And the teachers have been really receptive to working at integrating that routine into their interactive writing. And then vocabulary, you can see down there in the left-hand corner. Again, we've been focusing on vocabulary and building vocabulary to support students' comprehension. A couple other things we've been doing, we do do a word of the day every day over announcements. So I announce a word of the day, the definition, and then I use it in a sentence. And then the students have an opportunity to use that word in a sentence, so they can write it down, bring it down to the office, they get to pick a little prize. And then actually, on Fridays, I do a flashback Friday for word of the day, and I go back. Then I cycle back to the previous words we had already done and share some of the students' sentences that they wrote. Also, Mrs. Thompson, she is our math interventionist that we share with Washington Elementary School. However, she has a lot of strengths, and so as a part of our collaboration time, she'd been attending our weekly collaboration time within our vertical teams. We were talking about vocabulary, and she had a lot of really wonderful ideas for how to integrate some vocabulary routines in the classroom that were really engaging. So she actually did a little presentation for staff on that as well. Oh, and then last but not least, up in the right-hand corner, that's just an example too of our, one of our essential standards, ladders. And you can see the little checkmarks on there. That's something we implemented last year, and we found it to be very powerful with our students. We're continuing to do that. So the students use, in all the classes, some type, maybe not exactly like that one, but a very similar model of a way to practice their growth and towards proficiency on the essential standards. So some highlights of what our data is showing us in comprehension. So overall, our proficiency in comprehension has increased by four percent this year compared to mid-last year, according to our I-Ready. And then another thing to add is that all but one of our cohorts has increased proficiency in literature comprehension this year, mid-year compared to last year. Moving on to math, we are looking again for a five percent increase in proficiency this spring compared to last spring of students who are proficient, according to I-Ready. Geometry was one of our big focuses, or has been one of our big focuses this year for math, along with a continued focus on some of the instructional strategies that we took away from a book study we did last year on, from the text-building thinking classrooms. So we've also been focusing on continuing with some of those instructional strategies and also the geometry. Teachers, SLOs, and PPGs, as well as my SLO, directly aligned to our math goal this year as well because this is, and math was lower compared to our reading overall. And we chose to focus on geometry because that was our lowest domain last year. So overall, fifty percent of our students are proficient in math on the I-Ready mid-year. This is like the same as last year overall, so we didn't, we didn't really increase. We didn't really go down. We kind of stayed stagnant comparing that mid-year data. But when you look at the breakdown of some of the other domains, another area that we really focused on, and you can see the picture of the bulletin board there, we've been tracking a couple of essential standards as an entire school. So in addition to the geometry, which I will get to, we've also been tracking numbers-based ten and operations and algebraic thinking, essential standards for each grade level. And then on that board, we've been tracking proficiency in our comprehension essential standards as well. So that's not directly tied to I-Ready necessarily. That is based off of classroom assessments, some of those informal assessments that the teachers are giving their students throughout the year. So when looking at numbers and operations and operations and algebraic thinking, you can see from twenty-three to twenty-four mid-year to twenty-four, twenty-five mid-year, we had, we have accomplished a nice increase in both of those domains. Additionally, back to Mrs. Thompson, she has been supporting specifically some of our first-grade students. She's been working directly with a group of our first-grade students who just could benefit from that extra support, as well as providing some consultation to teachers, again, during that collaboration time, and really just as needed. She makes herself available. Okay, going to geometry, as you've all heard before, geometry is typically taught at the end of the school year when looking at the scope and sequence of a lot of our curricular resources. We felt that we could improve this really simply by just increasing the exposure of those geometry, geometry concepts to our students throughout the school year and not just leaving that primarily until the end of the year. So that's exactly what we did. So teachers start and/or end their math block with, it's kind of like an exit slip, just a little practice sheet, has some geometry concepts on there, as well as some other concepts that they're reviewing in math. So they do one of those each day, and then the teacher, of course, looks those over and grades them, and then provides feedback and reteaching as necessary for our students. When you look at our overall level of proficiency mid-year in the domain of geometry from last year to this year, you can see we went up from forty-nine percent up to sixty-one percent. And then I also have a table just breaking that down by specific cohorts. So we, you know, we do not have some of our students that we had last year, so this is just another way of looking at that as well. So you can see that all of our cohorts, with the exception of our, our third-grade cohort, made some significant gains in the domain of geometry. Okay, our last objective focuses on staff development, and this was specific to supporting students who really needed some additional extension. So some of you might remember me mentioning this at the end of the year last year, but one thing that we noticed was that our students who were coming to us in the fall, who are already early on or above grade level in a specific math reading, they were making the least amount of growth. So those are our students who made the least amount of growth last year. And so that was obvious in both math and reading. So we really wanted to focus in on how we can provide extension for our students who are ready for it. And really, what we've done is we've utilized our essential standards ladders to help determine what's next. So we've met as a whole staff to review some of our resources that we have around vertical alignment. So really looking at, and I'll pull this up. I added that arrow in the grade levels after because I realized that probably would help visually. So it probably doesn't show in your packet. But really, that vertical alignment, looking at, okay, if, so for example, on the bottom there in the yellow, that's an essential standard for reading for second grade. So if you have a second grader who is up to that three, that learning target four, and they are proficient, and let's say it's mid-year or even just the first quarter of the year, and you're thinking, well, how can I continue to challenge this student? Now, this isn't perfect in alignment. I know this is more work we're continuing to do amongst our grade levels and looking at that vertical alignment. But basically, what we, what you would do is look at then the third grade's essential standards ladder and kind of work your way up and see, okay, what can I continue to do instructionally when I'm working with a student in a small group to help support their continued growth as well? So some data to go along with that. Reading, so students at, above, or early on that met typical mid-year increased by forty percent this year for reading. We didn't see as large of an increase for math, especially when looking at the size of our student body, but students at, above, or early on that met typical mid-year increased by five percent this year in math compared to last year. Again, that's mid-year. I will say we didn't have as many students who came in at that at, above, or early on grade level in math. All right, so I'm going to take a moment to share some additional happenings at Wilson School. So our PTO is very supportive of engaging and providing experiences for our families and our students. Some things that we have had the opportunity to do already this year. We hosted a trunk-or-treat this fall. This was our second year doing that. It's been very, very well attended. I was really surprised. We had an RSVP for a hundred and forty people. So considering that our student body is sixty, I thought that was pretty good. So we served, I think, burgers and chicken tenders at that event. So family gets, families got to come in, have a free dinner. The kids got to trick-or-treat out of some trunks out on our playground, and we had some different fall-themed games as well. They are always supportive in providing luncheons for our staff for parent-teacher conference nights and staff appreciation, providing holiday treats for students. We just hosted our spring family night this last Friday, so we actually kind of tied that into like one of our title nights as well. So we had a specific math focus for that. Families came in, they got to play some different board games, as well as some card games. We had directions for multiple different card games they could play. We had pizza, we had guesstimation jars. So everyone who was there seemed to have a good time. We had bingo just for fun, so we did that, I think, about a month ago. And of course, we are gearing up for our Wildcats campers, so that is our fun run. We do that in the spring, so that will be early May here coming up. We also do buddy classes for upper and lower grades, so they do book buddies. One thing that our first graders did for our third, fourth, and fifth graders this year, which was really neat, was they wrote a lot of encouraging letters to the third through fifth graders as they have started the, or have been working through the forward testing. They even gave them water bottles and snacks to help them persevere. So it was kind of neat to see our little first graders, you know, going upstairs with all their gifts to present to the students before they took the state exam. For our holiday concert this year, we actually hosted it at Wilson School instead of at the high school. We thought that it would be a little just extra special, considering this is our last year together as an elementary school at Wilson. So students got to perform in our gym. Our PTO supported in decorating and dazzling it up to make it look festive. It was very well-attended, and I think the students enjoyed being able to perform in, at Wilson School. We had Book Fist Club. Again, this was a part of one of our title events too. So one morning, we invited families to come on in to have some breakfast treats and read with their children. We also had a representative there through a book fair. It wasn't Scholastic. It was actually through Paper Pie. It was really nice because as a part of that, our PTO was not looking to fundraise, but instead, they were able to allow families to be able to get some of those books at a discounted price, which was much appreciated. We do our monthly all-school read-alouds with an SEL focus. We have students who participate in patrols, so we have greeters. We have students who obviously put the flag up every morning as well, like all the other schools. Our student council has been very active in spreading kindness around our school. They've been working on our bulletin boards right now. The last couple of months, we've been talking a lot about putting our heart into it. So we're, how can you really put your heart into being kind? How can you put your heart into your learning goals? So if you are visiting Wilson School, you might see some hearts around on our bulletin boards. We have our positive office referrals, which are called our Way to Go Wildcats. So staff members can fill out basically an office referral stating that a student has done something that they could come to the office to celebrate with Mrs. Janzma. And then we have our monthly assemblies where we talk about our upcoming focus for the month, any school-wide reflections, and we celebrate our VIPs. So here's just a few pictures from some of those events. Book Fist Club, our, one of our monthly VIPs up in the upper left-hand corner. And then in the bottom-left-hand corner, that's Wilson staff with Santa Claus. So we actually have Santa visit after our holiday concert. All right. Now, last but not least, I can't go without sharing some of the ways we are supporting staff and students with the transition to Washington School next year. So one thing that Paul and I had talked about when we were, we've met, obviously, multiple times, but when we were planning how we'd want to work in some transition activities for this school year was we really wanted to make sure it was balanced. So we wanted, we want to be obviously supportive of this transition, but we wanted to be careful that it wasn't overshadowing the entire school year and that we are also really just focused on what we need to do this school year. So a lot of our big transition events, I guess, if you will, the students are requiring in May, which I will get to. Again, the Wilson Holiday Concert, that was kind of a part, I guess, of some of the transition conversation, even with families and just acknowledging it was our last concert together as Wilson School. I have had some discussions with students individually. Also, even at assemblies, we have acknowledged that during some of our assembly time together. I know that the teachers have all been trickling that in too. Sometimes it just naturally comes up, the students might have questions in the classroom. Again, as earlier mentioned, we've been collaborating as a staff, Wilson and Washington, during our in-service time. So that's when we've been really engaging in some of that collaborative work together in staff development. Mr. Wilson attended one of our Wilson staff meetings as well. So that was just within this last month. He attended to provide some construction updates to Wilson staff, especially for those, obviously, who will be transitioning over, so that they were looped in as well. We just had Read Across America Week. As a part of that, we invited some Washington staff over to be guest readers at Wilson School. So we had three staff members come over. We wanted to have staff members who the students would all interact with at some point next year. So we had Mr. Wilson come over. We had Mrs. Neal, Washington librarian, come over. And then we had Mrs. Vessi, Washington counselor, come over to read to Wilson students. I realize this is a little small. PTO meetings, our PTO meetings. We actually just had a Washington PTO member come to our last PTO meeting at Wilson. I will be attending a PTO meeting at Washington in this upcoming month as well. So we are working to get those teams working together and ready for that transition. I know at this next meeting for Washington, they're going to be doing already a lot of planning for this fall. Our PTO purchase, which I have a picture of up there, Washington Bulldog T-shirts for all of our students who will be transitioning over to Washington. So the students have not seen those yet. They are stored safely in my office because we do have, I'll get to some special events where we will be visiting Washington School. So much like the fun run, we have learned that you give them the T-shirt on that day, that morning, to put on because no guarantees that they'll come with it on that morning. And then our, our PTO is just being extra thoughtful about how we can make some of our events even a little extra special. So we have our end-of-the-year picnic, even our field day, which is the last day of school. So there's a lot of things in discussion about how to get some extra fun activities, inflatables, face-reading, different things to just make it, you know, going out of the vein, I guess. Upcoming events, so again, these are more student-focused. So April twenty-fourth, Wilson will be attending Washington's paint night. So this is a family event, an evening event. So this will be a nice way to get our Wilson families in Washington School, along, obviously, with their children, and to be able to have some of those families come together. On May ninth, Washington does a virtual assembly every Friday morning. So on May ninth, we will be joining their virtual assembly. On May fourteenth, we actually have a planned visit where we will be bussing students over to Washington School. So we are taking students over for a little tour, a Q and A, and then they are going to stay for lunch and recess that day as well. So that's the day where they get their Washington shirts, and they get to be a part of the Bulldog Pride. As a part of that too, I know we're, I think the plan is to have some of the Washington student leaders help lead that tour and Q and A for the Wilson students. So that'll be a nice way to let some of those Washington students step up and welcome Wilson students in. And then, last but not least, our Wilson community celebration will be on May seventeenth from ten AM to noon. So we will be having, getting out some advertisement to the community on that very soon here. And here's just some pictures from our guest readers. We have Mr. Wilson there on the left, Mrs. Neal there in the middle, and Mrs. Vessi over on the right. I had the opportunity to go in when Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Vessi were reading. The students were really engaged. Mr. Wilson read rock, paper, scissors. He even played rock, paper, scissors with some students. He even came back the next day to bring some candy that he owed a student. Beat him in rock, paper, scissors. Mrs. Vessi, it was cool because Mrs. Neal read- Um, Mrs. Vessi, uh, uh, it was cool because Mrs. Neal read The Word Collector, which actually, um, we read that book last year as a whole, um, school as well and did some activities around that. So, that was kind of neat to be able to bring them back to that. And then Mrs. Vessi read a book about kindness, which is really nice and had some follow-up activities for the students to do as well. So, that is all that I have for you this evening. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Vessi?
No, I'll just say, uh, Mary and I went to the, uh, coffee chat. I thought we had a wonderful time. Appreciate you having us there. Uh, we got through a couple of classrooms. Um, our kindergarten classroom, we did some, uh, drawing and, you know, uh, what did I draw? Matman? I think me and, uh, one of the students were drawing Matman. So, picture him, I'm not sure, but. Um, and then, um, third grade, we got to the third grade classroom. They were studying for the forward, uh, but just engaged kiddos in, in the entire school. So, um, commend you and, and, and the rest of the staff on a, uh, a great, um, environment. And I hope the forward went well for y'all.
Thank you.
Oh, and? And there was a Gary Spielman sighting, so. We'll report that to the board. We did see Gary.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate everything that you and your staff are doing at the school so you keep keeping things moving forward and good. And I like to see all the effort that you guys are putting into the transition, the plan to make it as painless and seamless as possible. I have full confidence that it'll, it'll work out just great again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to eight point two, high school out-of-state trip requests.
Good evening, everyone. Um, before I get into the out-of-state trips, um, just want to throw out a few things. We've got a, two really, uh, important weeks coming up here at the high school. Just wanted to put this on your schedule. So, tomorrow night, uh, the Spring Band Concert is at the high school in the auditorium at 7:30. And then next week, um, on the 22nd, the annual WBEV Career Fair will be at the high school in the Field House, so stop on by for that. And then the next day, the 23rd, we will host our annual Collegiate Signing Day in the auditorium. Currently, we have about 12 student athletes that are committing to, uh, participating in collegiate sports. So, that's going to be streamed on the Daily Dodge this year, but we'd love to have people in. Uh, it just makes that environment, uh, even stronger. And then, of course, we are in the midst of prom season. On April 26th, we will have prom at the high school. Uh, the grand march is at 4:00 p.m. Uh, prom itself is at Old Hickory again this year, starting at 6 o'clock. We have a dinner and then dance. So, if any of you would like to be there for the dance, you stop on through, chaperone, maybe show off some moves. And then post-prom will be this-
I recommend against it.
Uh, post-prom again is at the Dodge County YMCA, starting at 10:30. Mr. Tronson will be there. Uh, Water Park is open for anyone that wants to attend that as well. So, uh, lots of events coming up if you're so interested in attending.
Thank you.
Um, I am here for, uh, two specific out-of-state, uh, requests. Both of these came up, um, rather recently. They weren't part of our September or even December approvals, just because at that time, we didn't know. Um, I will be back next September on the whole big batch of them again. Um, so mark your calendars. Uh, the first one is, uh, the Robotics World Championship. This is in your board packet on, um, the 16th and 19th of this month. We are a little late. This one's unique. Uh, Owen Hemling is part of our robotics team, um, received a robotics award for his improvement and showcase of STEM skills. Uh, he will be traveling to Houston, Texas with Melissa Hemling, his mother. Uh, so it's a little bit more unique than, uh, other groups that go. Uh, but he'll be going down there. What a great opportunity. I know Cole's going as well, um, in, in mingling with other people in robotics, uh, in STEM as that program continues to develop. Uh, the second one, uh, actually also came from Melissa Hemling, and this just happened recently. Um, it's the Morgood Summer Science Camp. Um, Melissa Hemling applied for a grant, uh, and, uh, was, received this. This offers a free science research camp for up to five students of our choosing, uh, plus, uh, purchasing lab supplies for our school. Um, Melissa will be volunteering as a teacher at that event that takes place over five days on UW Madison's campus. And you know UW Madison's a very strong research school, so what a great opportunity for our kids right in our backyard. Uh, there is no cost to it other than transportation to get there, uh, but it is overnight, so they get to experience dorm life. So, uh, those are the two requests I'm asking, uh, for approval on. Um, I did include, um, just as, uh, a note, all of our different, um, state qualifiers and different events throughout the fall and the winter. Hopefully, I have all sorts of things to add this spring. But I do want to highlight before I pass on here, Skills USA, which is something we started this year, I've talked about it a couple of times over the last couple of years. Uh, Scott Dooley and Mackenzie Chico are running that. And in their first year, and they haven't even been doing it the full year, they were able to have Reese Schuet, a student at the high school, qualify for the national tournament under the power equipment technology with a specific focus on power sports. Uh, he finished first place at the state competition. Uh, he will not be going. He, he made the choice not to go. Um, it is ultimately a choice, and there are very, a variety of reasons, but we still want to recognize his achievement and, and his accomplishment. Not only Reese's, but the accomplishments of the program in less than a year, having that output. I, I, I think Skills USA is a tremendous asset to our school and our learning community, and I think is only going to continue to grow, not only what our students are capable of doing, but also our community partnerships, not only in Beaver Dam, but in the surrounding area. So, that's a long way of saying I am looking for approval on the two, um, trips.
Anyone got any questions for Mr. Gerber or Mr. Tronson?
Or Mr. Tronson's here too.
Yes. Anyone got any questions for either one of them?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to comment. I'm glad you, you mentioned again the people who have, you know, been involved in the, in the past year, including Max over there. And, um, I make a motion that we accept the, um, accept the what? The overnight state approv, uh, state trip approvals as presented.
Here we have a mo, motion and a second to approve the overnight trip requests made. Um, if there's not any other discussion or questions, I'll give everyone a favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, this is roll call, I'm sorry. No, I'll take it. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Please answer.
Yes.
Jeffrey B. Beal.
Yes.
Joanna Jeski.
Yes.
Isaac Hornfeld.
Yes.
Mary King.
Yes.
John Crowes.
Yes.
Archers.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that, I get carried away in the moment.
That's okay. And again, 4:26 prom, 6 o'clock DJ start. So, anyone that's interested, there's great food at Old Hickory too. I just want to put that out there.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on, uh, board, the reports will be presented by the Board of Education, nine point one, uh, Student Rep Report.
Hello. So, since my last report, um, students all across the district were able to enjoy a long-anticipated spring break. Um, activities did slow down over this week, but it was vital to students recuperating before the end of the school year. Um, freshmen and sophomores at the high school took the pre-ACT standardized test. Um, this helped the school get diagnostics to track students' learning, but also helped the students gain practice, um, for the real ACT coming up their junior year. Um, speaking of the ACT, the juniors did take their ACT test and have gotten their results back, so that crossed off a big test from the high school checklist. Um, this past month has also had a lot of leadership conferences and competitions for student organizations in the high school, so I'm just going to highlight a few of those. Um, as Mr. Gerber alluded to, Skills USA competed in the state competition in their first year. They, we had teams in medical terminology, power and equipment, automotive maintenance and light repair, three-day printing and technical drafting. And one student did take first in power equipment technology and did qualify for the national competition in June. Um, Keke Club had their annual Wisconsin and Upper Mission convention. Um, Beaver Dam did, or will be well-represented this coming year on the state level as they had four students elected state officers, serving as the district secretary and treasurer, district director of committees, district lieutenant governor, and the highest state position district governor. So, Beaver Dam will be represented on the state well. And good luck to those individuals on their future year of service. FCC LA had their state leadership conference, and a student took home gold rating on our hopeful Suitcases Project in the Focus on Children Level Three competition. And FFA had 48 students compete at state qualifying career development events competition. Of those 48, 32 qualified to compete in state, and the teams were egg, agriculture sales, agronomy, farm management, forestry, livestock, poultry evaluation, science, and wildlife. And since I've wrote this report, we actually have got one state result back. Last Friday, our egg sales team competed at state. We got second for the third year in a row, so it was a little bit disappointing. We were hoping to win this year. But Brianna Gansky took first place individually, so that was pretty cool. And the agri-science department also recently welcomed four baby piglets to the classroom, and students have begun gaining real-world experience with activities such as clipping needle teeth, iron shots, and other things that farmers do when their baby piglets are born. And finally, the drama department put on a production of the play Trap. I was not able to attend, but I heard it was very well put on and very interesting. In the last month, I look forward to closing out my term as student rep and seeing how the district is getting ready to wrap up the school year.
Any questions for Max? Well, thank you, Max. I do think you need to auction something off till next, next month.
Well, I will tell you guys this. So, uh, last week, I think it was Tuesday, I got a text message from a random number, and it said that they were in dire need of an auctioneer at a banquet. And I did decide to do it. And so, I did, I did auction for a banquet last week, and I raised $13,000.
Good deal.
I thought I would have to tell you guys that. I invested in my auctioneer.
Yes.
There you go. Well, I, I, I think maybe next month, he should give us a little presentation, a demo of your skills.
Okay.
We better bring some money if he's going to be auctioning something off.
Maybe Mark, we can auction him.
All right, thank you, Max. All right, we'll move on to nine point two. Before we get to nine point two, we got a typo in the agenda that we got item A that's under Board Engagement Recognition should be under Operations. So, just, we're gonna, it was just a typo. I think it might be right on there, it's just not yours. Oh, that could be too. I don't know. Maybe mine's not right, I don't know. But anyways, that's what mine shows anyways. So, move on to Operations Committee.
Okay, um, there was no Operations Committee meeting in March, and our next meeting is April 28th. Um, we do typically do a referendum projects update, and at this time, I would like to ask Joanne or John if they have any updates because I know they attended the last, um, meeting in regard to that.
Yeah, John and I attend the meetings that are every other week, um, to follow the plans, but to be, participate in the committee, um, and to, um, stay in touch with the plans. We're at the phase now where they're really working on the schematic, uh, design drawings, and, um, they have been, um, wrapping up the design phase, meeting with the, uh, the staff as well, and have received a lot of valuable input from the staff as well as the committee. So, as those drawings are completed, they've begun, um, some es, cost estimating, and everything is coming in really nice. So, there's, um, everything is looking really good with that. The plans are looking beautiful. Um, they're working on exterior, uh, materials and concepts, and that is coming, uh, wrapping up as well. So, the, I believe that the, uh, they were out there looking at the land and kind of surveying the land and getting ready for that process now. Um, that has begun. With Washington Elementary, we had the honor of participating in the groundbreaking with a number of the Washington Bulldogs. Um, they really did a great job throwing dirt in the air, and it landed on all of us. They were, they were pretty excited. So, that was awesome as well. And I know some of the other projects district-wide, um, that are set for this summer are getting going. If you get a chance to just drive by Washington, you can, uh, from Grove Street, see some work on, in progress. So, that's pretty fun to take a little roundabout, so.
Any, any questions for Joanne at all? Ryan, would you like to give us some other updates you got there, please?
Yeah, just to expand on, uh, Joanne's referendum updates, uh, she had mentioned some delineation going on at the middle school, uh, location. So, that's the wetland delineation. And final surveying did begin last week. The DNR was on site, um, and that will be completed once the growing ser, the growing season is underway. Um, at Washington, our Phase One Bid Package Two, the budget costs and the subcontractor onboarding is completed. Uh, our projected budget is lining up very well with our current, uh, bids that we have at this time. And the $27 million from the first bond issuance has been invested in a variety of CDs and treasuries, um, that come due throughout the project to help, help our cash flow. So, as the cash flow, we know when we're going to have certain bills due. These CDs are coming due, and then we'll, we'll make those bills. Um, as far as the summer projects, so I know I've updated you all three or four times. Ideally, this will be the last update before we actually start on these projects, but, uh, they're, they're slated to start on June 2nd. Uh, for the most part, there is, uh, certain pieces of the project that could start that last week of school, as long as it doesn't interfere with any of our student activities or student learning. Um, but these projects include the playgrounds at Jefferson and Prairie View, uh, some ADA accessibility improvements at the high school and Jefferson, safety improvements at the high school and the ESC, and the new varsity softball field at the high school. Um, we are expecting to release bids for, uh, the referendum projects on April 25th. So, we will have those back middle of May, ideally get contractors going. There's been a lot of interest, so we're, um, there's a lot of opt, optimism on, on these projects going forward. So, it's exciting, busy, but it's exciting, so.
I think just one other last little thing I'd like to mention is I really wanted to thank, um, the report from the architects was, uh, when, when they met with the staff, how thoughtful that input was from all the middle school staff, um, to make their spaces the best learning opportunity. And what a great chance to, to really design a space, a new space for learning at the middle school. And it's exciting to see some, the wing with all of the specials come together and all the thought going into the art rooms and the new egg room at the middle school, and some of the things we've never had the opportunity to offer, um, in the school building we're in. Just the excitement, uh, for the staff to be able to do so much better, um, with the facilities at the new building. So, it's been an honor to be part of that project. I'm sure I speak for John as well.
Any questions for Ryan?
I, I was just going to comment, um, for anybody who's listening, that the monthly report on the, on the progress is posted on our website if anybody does want to see that. So, um, feel free, that's kind of what we're looking at that way, so.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Cashman. All right, we'll move on to nine point three, teaching and learning.
Uh, teaching and learning also did not meet in March, and the next meeting is scheduled for April 28th.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, we'll move on to nine point four, Board Engagement and Recognitions. Anyone want to start?
Um, I just want to recognize, I, uh, don't have students in the high school now, but this, this amount of things I see on social media that our schools are involved with in the high school, and the number of the opportunities kids have that they didn't have even just a few years ago, like we mentioned earlier, the Skills USA, but all of the, um, increased, um, things for the face department and for the, uh, DECA club that we didn't have even just a few years ago, how just inspiring it is for me to see that, as well as how excited the community gets for baby pigs in the egg room and all of the other things going on. And thanks to the extra work that the staff does to really work with these kids, um, outside of their normal school day and to help them have opportunities that are ever increasing.
I would just like to recognize all my fellow board members that got re-elected for another three years, so. It's awesome, and I look forward to working with you guys again. We got a lot of great things to do yet, and, and at, and we're, it's exciting, it really is.
Yeah, speaking of the board election, I was involved with the Board of Canvassers just to make sure that all the votes were counted appropriately and the numbers agreed and, um, and everything was fine, so there was no any questions. I also participated in the wellness committee, and that group of ladies are really gung-ho with a lot of different things and, uh, you know, recipes and, um, e, exercise and dancing and- exercise and dancing and whatever, so, um, it's a good, good group. Like to have a little bit of male input once in a while, but that's kind of hard to get them to come to that meeting.
Um, I did go to the tennis, the boys tennis home opener last Tuesday. I don't know that much about tennis, uh, but I learned a little bit more. Uh, it was a little chilly, but at least there was some sun. Kind of fast-paced, they look like they're having fun out there, so I really enjoyed it.
I wanna give a shout-out to the Beaver Dam Track and Field teams who participated at the Second Harvest Mobile Food Pantry on Saturday morning. Had a really good showing from them. They did a great job, so that's really nice to see. And then, um, also just another shout-out to Wilson. Just, um, enjoyed going through the, the school building and, um, saw some great phonics work while we were there. So that was fun to see too, um, and I'm sure I could fill you in on the treats that we had, and.
And my, my son did go to the play, and he did say it was interesting. That was his description. That's all he would tell me. I couldn't go.
Um, so this past, uh, month, I had an opportunity, I was talking about quite a bit. We'll start with the, the Community Theater, which, uh, a bunch of our students were part of a, uh, a play called The Thirty-three Little Pigs, speaking of the little piglets that were born, but uh, this one's a little different. It's based upon the, um, the Big Bad Wolf story and the Three Little Pigs, but a big shout-out to all those kiddos. They put a ton of work into it, and it was a really, really great play, a fun, funny play. So that was a, that was good to go to. I stopped by the Swing Into Spring, the literacy night at Lincoln. That was pretty well-attended with, uh, a bunch of their, uh, families, so, um, some, some good information, you know, for families to use, uh, just with, with reading and, and, um, you know, literacy in general. Uh, after that, we stopped into art, the art night at the middle school. A bunch of, um, great artwork there, um, some, some, uh, the instruments and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of talent in that building for sure, without a doubt, so that was nice to see. Yep, we went to Wilson. The, uh, blueberry scones is what I ended up having. That was, they were good. They had, uh, a bunch of sugar on them and some, you know, fresh blueberries, so I was happy. I, I'm not sure for the year, I think, I was thinking about this a little bit today, I, I think the, the egg bake at, uh, Jefferson, I think, is, is maybe what took, what kind of took the cake this year, so. We're not calling it a quiche either, 'cause I don't believe it was a quiche. So that's, uh, that, that's my take on that, and then last but not least, I want to personally thank Mr. Tronson for inviting me to be a judge for the chili cook-off at the high school on their in-service day. We had twelve chilies, um, in the contest, or entered in the contest. Twelve chilies I got to try that day. About two, two, three ounces of chili of, of each end. They were really, really good. I thoroughly impressed with, with, with the work that those folks did, um. So I, I wanna just personally thank the staff and you, Mr. Tronson, for having me, 'cause that was really, really enjoyable. A big shout-out to, to the winners. I don't remember exactly, uh, who we had, but, um, I do know that the, the judges' first choice also won, I think, second or third from their peers, so that was a, it was a good entry, that's for sure, and uh, I did go back for second, so I'll be real honest. Thanks for having me, Mr. Tronson.
Anything else from the board before I turn it over to Mr. DiStefano?
All right, I just have a, a couple. I wanted to echo the, uh, thanks to Ashley, um, also the whole staff at Wilson, and then, um, Paul, uh, whenever you, uh, decide you, you need his input on stuff too, but just the work you guys are doing with the transition, so. I'm really excited about that team, uh, coming together and know it's gonna go well because of the time that you guys put in, so I really appreciate that. I know the cat's out of the bag a little bit on this, but I wanna reiterate, um, my recognition for, uh, Brandon Kraus as a co-fellow principal leader in the state of Wisconsin. It's a pretty significant, uh, award. We will find more opportunities to embarrass, uh, Brandon, uh, for that recognition, um, and he will be the first to say that, you know, it's a, it's a shared lift, so, and it's his team and the work that they're doing, but, um, his vision is stick-to-it-ness and focus, uh, is what brings some of that, um, to fruition, so. Commends you, one of fourteen out of thousands of principals in the state that get that recognition, so very significant. Um, also, we are a month away really from, um, a number of celebrations as it relates to scholarships and awards and other designations, and we always recognize the students, and we will do that again in a month, but uh, proactively just wanna recognize the donors and the businesses and the commitment that our community makes. Several hundred thousand dollars annually are distributed to our students, um, that are coming from Beaver Dam High School, so that's a pretty significant and unique niche, uh, to be able to have that opportunity, and I know our kids and the families appreciate it very much, and they use it very, very well, so I just wanna, uh, take a moment to thank the, the donors and the businesses and others that contribute or participate in making sure that that's an awesome experience, uh, for our kids. That's all I got.
Well, thank you.
I move the board recess in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss specific employees or employee groups in nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Okay, we'll motion a second ago in a closed session. Nicole, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll be back.
Okay. We'll move on to item 12, district policies and guidelines, 12-1 retirements.
We have, uh, please, as a major consideration, as well as the reason why we're here for 25 years. For example, I'm a student of Washington University School, and 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 I'm a student of Washington University